The Board of Aldermen to order at 8:50 on March 26th here in the Aldermanic Chamber. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Patricia Piatzou, and Alderman Lopez will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us with God with the Spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I declare the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the roll? Alderman O'Brien.
President.
Alderman Gidge. Alderman Harriet Gathwright. Alderman Dowd.
President.
Alderman Clea. Alderman Laws.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderwoman Malisee Gola.
Present.
Alderman Tenza.
President.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Here.
We have 13 members present. Also in attendance this evening is Mayor James Donches and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. Mayor wish to address the board?
Excuse me, yes, Madam President. Try to keep it brief. There are a couple of landfill-related items on tonight. The costs for us and for communities across the United States, really in terms of waste, handling solid waste are going up significantly. So you see some of those costs hitting. The first is the bonding of $6 million for the construction of Phase III of the landfill. Right now, were nothing done at the landfill, there would be maybe a year or a year and a half left of life, and then it would have to be closed. So Phase, excuse me, the construction of Phase III, which has been licensed by DES, will buy an additional 10 to 15 years. And then Phase IV is, Public Works is seeking to license Phase IV, which they think they can ultimately do. That will enable the landfill to be, the life of the landfill to be extended for another 40 or so years. But all of these, excuse me, all these projects are necessary unless we wanted to just close the landfill down, and then the cost of just shipping waste out of town would be, of course, very, very significant. The other landfill-related waste, solid waste-related cost is $120,000, which is necessary to pay for the disposal of the recycling for the remaining three, the last three months of the year or so. I think you've heard a lot about that, so I won't go into it too much more. One thing that I hope you've noticed is that the Your Voice, Your Choice project finished, we appropriated $25,000 to be spent in the tree streets. The project was for people within the neighborhood to develop possible projects, which they did, with the cooperation and assistance of PAL and NeighborWorks and other organizations. And there were about 10, Alderman Lopez was very involved, but about 10 projects that were put forward. And then there was a vote in the neighborhood of more than 300 people. The project, it came out, I mean, the whole experience, if you talk to Ms. Marshant or Ms. Chismas, was extremely positive. In the end, the neighbors voted to spend $20,000 on a footsall court, and then $5,000 on community gardens. Now, footsall court is something we would not ever have thought of, I think. What it is, is a soccer field or court the size of a basketball court, where kids can play soccer in a much more urban setting, in a much more confined space. And they play soccer in an enclosed space with fencing, like a basketball court-sized court, and it's a smaller team. It's like five-on-five, not a full 11-person team. But the soccer people say that this is a great way, not only to engage the young people in an urban environment, but also to teach soccer skills, because the footwork required on a small court is very intricate, and therefore soccer players develop their foot skills more quickly in this type of environment than on a larger field. So it turned out great. The project is fantastic. We should definitely think about doing this again. This money was escrowed and then devoted to this purpose, and I just think it was really positive, great for the neighborhood. They came up with a really good idea, and in the end, I think we did something really good for the city. On the assessing front, you got a report from Ms. Kleiner and Mr. Griffin about various steps that have been taken over the last couple of weeks, one of which was a meeting with the DRA. Also, I think you got a copy of the KRT report, which was posted on the website, which explains the assessing process and what was done here in Nashua, which is typical of what is done everywhere in a revaluation. I think it gives people a very, you know, in-depth insight of what the revaluation process is. It has tables with all the properties in Nashua, so I think it shows people, gives them great insight into, more insight than they had as to what happens in the revaluation. And finally, I thought I would mention that Saturday is the Seventh Walk Against Heroin, organized by Darlene Pina, who lives here in Nashua. This will start at Greeley Park and come down to City Hall and go back. She, Darlene, is very devoted to making, in organizing these walks, and I think they show a lot of support for the families that have been deeply affected by the heroin, opioid crisis, as well as those in recovery. And it's, again, a very positive experience. Obviously, anybody on the board would be more than welcome if you wish to participate in the walk, and otherwise, you know, I just want to thank Darlene for organizing this again. So that's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you. Responses to remarks of the mayor. I'll start over here. Alderman Lopez.
So a quick response regarding the Your Choice, Your Voice. I was involved in proposing garbage cans along the rail trail and a bus shelter, so not the really exciting stuff. It was actually the kids at the PAL Center who, when they heard that they actually had a choice and their voice would be heard, several of them started organizing projects, proposals, you know, visual aids, which were shown to us at a resource fair. So they were the ones, I think his name was Devonte, who were pushing the footsall court and advocated for it and developed the community support. So I think a really good lesson for them. They were also interested in a gaga pit, which I also had to look up, but it sounds like a great idea. Invite anyone to check into that. I just wanted to clarify with the mayor regarding the Awareness is Healing Walk this Saturday. My understanding was it was going to start at City Hall and then loop around back to City Hall?
Well, that may be, I'm so used to doing it the other way, so we should look into it before Saturday. I'm just used to it doing, but I think you're right that they've decided to reverse it this time.
Well, they posted it on their Facebook page, and they told me to play guitar at the beginning of it, so I hope I'm in the right place.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm sure you're right. I'm just going by the past.
Any other remarks, responses to the remarks of the mayor? Well, Alderman Lopez, I know what footsall is, but whatever that other thing you mentioned, gaga?
Yeah, it's basically a pit where you use your hands instead of your feet with a ball.
Okay.
It's very interesting. It's very compact, too, so I think-
But it's not like footsall.
No, it's basically the opposite.
Thank you.
Handsaw.
Recognition period.
There is none.
Reading minutes of previous meetings and public hearings. There being no objection, I'll declare the minutes of the Board of Aldermen meetings of March 7, 2019, March 12, 2019, and the public hearing conducted by the Planning and Economic Development Committee on March 19, 2019, accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communication from Jeffrey L. Snow, Superintendent Edward Cemetery, relative to the request to meet in joint convention with the Edward Cemetery Board of Trustees.
There being no objections, I'll accept the communication, place it on file, and schedule a joint convention with the Edward Cemetery Board of Trustees on Tuesday, April 9, 2019, at 7:30 in the Aldermanic Chamber. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. No one has signed up. Communications requiring final approval.
Communication from Patricia D. Piatzou, City Clerk, relative to the NRO Section 5-6 compensation.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make, like to accept and place on file pursuant to NRO 5-6, authorized to the city to pay Alderman Gidge his full stipend for the first quarter of 2019.
Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication from Mayor Jim Donches, relative to the contract award for the Phase III landfill construction.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to accept, place on file, and award the contract to Charter Contracting Company, LLC, in the amount of $5,525,525.
Heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Petitions.
And a corinth with NRO 285, Article 3, a petition for street discontinuous portion of Lakeside Avenue has been received.
There being no objection, I'll accept the petition for street discontinuance referred to the Committee on Infrastructure and the Nashua City Planning Board, and schedule a public hearing for Wednesday, April 24, 2019, at 7:00 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber. Nominations, appointments, and elections.
There are none.
Reports of committee, Budget Review Committee. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the March 18, 2019 Budget Review Committee, accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I declare the report of the March 20, 2019 Finance Committee, accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the March 11, 2019 Human Affairs Committee, accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the March 21, 2019 Penachuck Water Special Committee, accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the March 19 Planning and Economic Development Committee, accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the March 14, 2019 Substandard Living Conditions Special Committee, accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of mayor's appointments.
There are none.
Unfinished business resolutions.
Second reading of Resolution 19-108, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $15,573 from the State of New Hampshire Department Environmental Services Exotic Species Program in authorizing the transfer of matching funds.
Alderman Schmidt.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to, I move for final passage on R19-108.
Motion is to, the motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Second reading of Resolution 19-109, authorizing Penachuck Corporation and Penachuck Waterworks, Inc. to borrow funds from the State of New Hampshire Drinking Water and Groundwater Trust Fund.
Alderman Tenza.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R19-109.
Motion is for final passage of R19-109. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Second reading of Resolution 19-111, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of an additional $138,937.92 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into transit grant activity, Federal Transit Authority, FTA, operating grant.
Alderwoman Malisee Gola.
Yes, Madam President. I move for final passage of R19-111.
Motion before us is for final passage of Resolution 19-111. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Second reading of Resolution 19-115, relative to the supplemental appropriation of $120,000 of unanticipated revenue from Fund 6,000 Solid Waste Fund Account 44286, Cover Material Revenue, into Fund 6,000 Solid Waste Fund Account 55699, Other Contracted Services.
Alderman Jettie.
I move for final passage of R19-115 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage by roll call. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathwright.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderwoman Malisee Gola.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
We have 13 ayes.
That motion carries.
Second reading of Resolution 19-116, changing the purpose of up to $10,000 of unexpended bond proceeds from the roof replacement work at Fairgrounds Middle School and Lead Street Elementary School to pay cost of roof assessment at Main Denstable, Birch Hill, and Bicentennial Elementary Schools.
Alderman Dowd.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R19-116 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage of R19-116. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Roll call.
Oh, my bad, sorry. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathwright.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderwoman Malisee Gola.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
We have 13 ayes.
That motion carries.
Second reading of Resolution 19-119, authorizing Penachuck Corporation and Penachuck East Utility, Inc. to enter into a term loan with CoBank ACB.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R19-119.
Motion is for final passage of Resolution 19-119. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Second reading of Resolution 19-122, discontinuing three expendable trust funds.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R19-122.
The motion is for final passage of R19-122. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Unfinished business ordinances.
Second reading of ordinance 19-038, amending the sign ordinances relative to address numbers of ground signs.
Alderwoman Malisee Gola.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to withdraw from committee ordinance 019-038.
Motion is to withdraw from committee ordinance 19-038. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries. Alderwoman Malisee, oh, sorry.
I'll do the second reading again. Second reading of ordinance 19-038, amending the sign ordinance relative to address numbers on ground signs.
Alderwoman Malisee Gola.
Yes, I would like to move to amend ordinance 19-038 with the proposed amendments made by the Planning and Economic Development Committee on March 19, 2019, and I will just describe those.
Sure.
The amendments are for the letters to be a minimum of four inches to a maximum of eight, and the sign, the printed area cannot be more than 10 square feet, and it's included, or not included, in the size of the sign.
Okay, the motion is to amend. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Alderwoman Malisee Gola.
Yes, with that, I would like to re-refer ordinance 19-038 as amended to the Planning and Economic Development Committee and the Nashua City Planning Board, and that a public hearing be scheduled on Tuesday, April 16, 2019, at 7:00 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries. New business resolutions.
First reading of Resolution 19-124, naming the intersection at Grand Avenue and North 7th Street, Little League Square.
Additional sponsors? Alderwoman Harriet Gathwright, Alderman Dowd, Alderwoman Karen, Alderwoman Malisee Gola, Alderman Tenza, Alderman Schmidt. And given its first reading, that will be assigned to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of Resolution 19-125, approving the cost items of a sidebar agreement between the Nashua Board of Police Commissioners and UFPO Local 645 Professional Employees of the Nashua Police Department and Department Regarding Special Projects.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Tenza, Alderwoman Malisee Gola, Alderman, Alderman Harriet Gathwright, sorry. Given its first reading, I will assign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of Resolution 19-126, authorizing the mayor to apply for and expand the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, and Home Investment Partnership Program Funds for the fiscal year 2020.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Harriet Gathwright, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Laws, Alderman Lopez, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderwoman Malisee Gola, Alderman Schmidt. There being no objection, I will accept the first reading of 19-126, assign it to the Human Affairs Committee, and schedule a public hearing from Monday, April 8, at 7:00 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber.
First reading Resolution 19-127, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $2,800,000 for the police department heating, ventilation, and air conditioning system, HVAC, and window improvements.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderwoman Harriet Gathwright, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Laws, Alderman Lopez, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderwoman Malisee Gola, Alderman Tenza, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Clemmons. Alderman Dowd.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the first reading of R19-127 by roll call, assign it to the Budget Review Committee, and that a public hearing be scheduled for Monday, April 15, 2019, at 7:00 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber.
You've heard the motion? Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, roll call, my bad. It's twice.
Just responding.
Would the clerk please call the roll? That's two, I got one more.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathwright.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderwoman Malisee Gola.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
We have 13 ayes.
That motion carries. New business ordinances.
There are none.
Period for general public comment. We have one person signed up this evening, Laurie Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. Give your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Laurie Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. I wanted to start off by extending an apology to the Board of Assessors. I went out to their meeting on Thursday, and at the end of the meeting, one of the members was pretty deeply offended by my comments at this meeting where I stated that meetings had been canceled because there wasn't a quorum. And I believe I said that three meetings were canceled, and it turns out that the two meetings that were canceled in February were canceled, a meeting was canceled on February 7th because they didn't have a quorum and I got an email. And then a week later, a meeting was canceled on February 14th because they didn't have a quorum and I got an email. But it wasn't a separate meeting, so that wasn't two meetings canceled in their mind. It was one meeting canceled twice. And I was not really aware of that because I wasn't paying attention to the date, I was busy. And the meeting prior to that that was canceled was canceled due to a lack of work to do in their minds, so they didn't hold the meeting. So I told the assessor member that I would come forward and clarify that. I think there's still some other issues with our board that we can work on and deal with, so I want to extend that to you, any misinformation I gave you. It was only the two meetings that were canceled for a quorum, and I don't know if we're still looking for somebody for that board or not. So that's taken care of. I would like to talk to you about your nepotism policy. I was unaware, and as you know, my husband and I had our issues in the assessing department, and one of our concerns is the fact that relatives work in the assessing department. We have two brothers. And it really didn't work for us. The whole situation ended up being, I think, handled in a complete conflict of interest by the two brothers being involved in our case. It's bothered me a lot when I came out to the meeting and the mayor spoke about the changes at the management audit meeting, and he mentioned that we have an assessor in the office who is a certified supervisor who could take over working for the office. I was really upset by that because it's one of the brothers. And I just could not stand the thought of a relative taking over as an assessor, as a leader, over a sibling, a relative. It just, it upset me enough that the next day I went to Kim Kleiner's office and said, "You just can't do this." And then last Friday, out of the blue, I don't even know why, I never checked, I emailed your HR director and I said, "Do you have a nepotism policy?" Well, it came to me Friday afternoon, and the policy very clearly states that no relatives will work in the same office if it creates the appearance of a conflict of interest. That was number one. And the second part of the policy was no relative will work in a supervisory or managerial position above any other relative, no questions asked. It's just not happening. Well, in my opinion, we violate that in both cases. We have brothers in there, not only were they working in the same office, they actually had the same role. They were both the residential assessors. We have four assessors. The two that served as the residential assessors were the relatives for 10 years. For our situation, you know, we had a dispute with how an assessment was created on a property by one individual. When we asked for a review of the property, the individual that came to the door was the other brother. And my husband was really upset about that. He came to the door, my husband took his business card, read it, and said, "Oh, any relationship to the gentleman who created our assessment?" And he chuckled, and he went, "Well, yes, I know it doesn't look good, but..." Personally, I don't think anyone should be at your door telling you, "It doesn't look good, but..." If it doesn't look good, it's not good, and you shouldn't have been there. But he came in, I said to my husb, and my husband's next comment to him was, "By chance is the supervisor or management, do they carry the same last name as well?" And he chuckled and said, "Well, no." We had him come in, he spent about 40 minutes there. I said to my husband privately, "We're going to throw his brother under the bus because we ain't holding back. It's not our fault he sent the brother. We got a problem, and we're going to put it all on the table." So we did. We went through everything. We showed him the property card at 17 Berkeley Street that his brother discounted deeply on a half-price home. How that happened. He kept circling our dining room table and flipping to that property card, and pursing his lips and just looking at the data. And we peppered him with a lot of questions. We walked him outside down the street. We asked him to explain effective year bill to us, and he couldn't. He said, "I just, I just can't really explain that to you right now." And we said, "Okay, but we're really trying to understand what happened to our property." He came back in the house and he said, "You've asked a lot of good questions. You have a bigger issue here, I can see." bigger issue here, I can see." He said, "Give me a week and I'll get back to you." He left and we never heard from him again. Now, I held out, I know I'm more naive than my husband, my husband said, "This is over. You know, this brother ain't gonna do anything for us." I held out hope, and I said, "Well, give him a chance, give him a chance, give him a week." One week went by, two weeks went by, three weeks went by, I'm in and out of City Hall. The third week I saw him in the hallway, I said, "Greg, I'm waiting for your response. You know, have you looked into our situation, and what did you determine?" "Oh, oh, I'm talking to my boss, I, I'll follow up, I'll get back to you tomorrow." The next day comes nothing, the next day I send an email. "Oh, oh, I still haven't followed up, sorry." And we just never heard. And that was the issue with our abatement that set us off so much, is that our issue was a fight that needed a legal entity, we felt, because we couldn't even get the city to agree that there was a legitimate dispute here. And so we knew we were gonna be locking horns, and when the mayor was talking about our tax rate going down publicly, we were so concerned that he was sending a message with his authority and his influence to the assessing office, saying, "These people really don't have a legitimate complaint. What are they talking about? Their tax bill's going down. So I have a mayor who's making those public statements, I have a brother at my door who's backing his brother." And I'm just gonna tell you, it was an awful experience, and this should not be happening. It's too small an office to have family in there. Now, to extend it further, sometimes when families in an office together, things can get a little chatty about family stuff. Do we have that situation going on? Well, maybe I won't answer that for you tonight. But I think I spoke to Steve Bolton about it, and he said, "He's heard that that's an issue." Now, that doesn't mean that Steve agrees it is or has looked into it, but he's heard that, okay? I've spent enough time down there where I have an opinion. But that happens because you put relatives together. And I met with Kim Kleiner today, and I said, "Imagine what it's like for the other two assessors down there. And imagine what it's like for the rest of the staff when you're working." I think that's a problem. I spoke to Larry, the head of Human Resources, yesterday after I got the policy on Friday, and I said to him, "Now that one of them has gone off and done a supervisor certification, was that individual told that you cannot serve in a management capacity in City Hall because you cannot manage your brother? You cannot serve in that capacity?" Because I don't think that was told. And it should be explained. It's great you're moving up, it's great you want a promotion, but you're gonna have to seek that outside of Nashua, or one of you has to go, because we're not gonna allow a supervisory role in our City Hall. And I, he could answer me that that was explained to the employee, but it sure as heck should have been. And the policy was last updated in 2014. I really think those policies should be given to every employee. And I asked Larry, "What other relatives do we have in City Hall that are working together in the same department? And are others working under managerial roles?" Because we should know that. Just from a conflict of interest standpoint, and I cannot tell you, I took this to Commissioner Step, how much and strongly I feel that in an assessing office where they follow code of conduct and ethics rules from the IAAO, from the NHAAO, from the DRA itself, there's three different conflict of interest and ethics policies from every organization that our folks belong to, because assessing and the money are important issues. And when you have that kind of regulation there at that level, I really believe that you should not set up that type of conflict. I was in Kim Kleiner's office today, and I showed her a property card that was worked by the relatives. And everything on it, that was wrong, and not owned by those individuals for what they did wrong, until a property owner in your neighborhood behind you bought it in 2017 and got completely screwed because permits weren't handled correctly, the MLS correction wasn't handled correctly. And when they moved in, they didn't realize a permit that was opened in 2010 and closed was never, was never valued. It didn't get closed till 2016. You've heard me argue that you can't leave permits open that long. And when it got closed in 2016, the relative assessor, one of them, didn't value it. The house sells in the fall of 2017, the couple comes in, they think, "Okay." And then, all of a sudden, in December, they get a call from the bank that their escrow account is empty and they owe $2,500. They were stunned. And they didn't get a letter from the city, they didn't get the assessor's calling saying, "We are so sorry, we screwed this up, we own this." They got a hard EYB adjustment like I did, so they, their assessment went up $100,000 more, and they were, you know, with the tax rate at 25 bucks, they owed 2,500 bucks more. It wasn't an escrow. And of course, as property owners, they called the tax office, the assessing office, and said, "What, you know, what happened?" And got a story like, "Well, you know, you did pay more for the house, and this was the type of adjustment we make, and this is what we do. I went over to that property this weekend. I brought that card, I brought all the information, and I showed them what happened to them." It wasn't right. And it's manipulated by two relatives. I don't like it. It's not good business. So, you know, I'm a little hell-bent about changing that. There's no question that I, I'm not gonna put up with that, right up to the state level. That's gonna be something we work on and trying to fix. The other thing I want to talk to you about is, I think I could safely say Steve Bolton and I have pretty much locked horns on the issue regarding the equalization ratio. We had a good battle at the end of the Board of Assessors meeting. And so I think my job is to push, and his job is to resist. And so, that's the way it is, but I want to explain something to you. I'm really sensitive about the use of this ratio on these abatements. The use of a ratio is a complex issue, and maybe most of you here don't know about it. I certainly didn't. And I feel that our assessing office is not using this ratio uniformly, the way the state has set it up to be used. I see assessors, namely the relatives, applying the ratio randomly. I started digging into this two, three months ago, and the abatements for 2015, 16, and 17 were the ones I looked at. And it seemed like for every cluster of six I would look at, three got the ratio, three did not. When I filled out my state complaint, I sent this data to the state on my PA 71, saying, "Why is this happening? Why do some get the ratio and some don't?" When I talked to Steve about it back a little while ago, his position was, "Well, abating is a negotiation, and you find that in the negotiation process, the ratio, some people, if they've negotiated, the ratio is just kinda taken away. It's all part of the negotiation." I agree with him on that for commercial properties. Commercial properties and the bigger properties where it's lawyer to lawyer, and those are, they are negotiated. You've got two well-educated attorneys that are battling out what I see the big accounts, Pheasant Lane Mall, the utility companies, the big boys. And they're working on striking an agreement. And I agree that the ratio gets mixed into that type of negotiation. But I will tell you, for residential properties, really 100%, I don't see negotiating going on. It's not happening. The residents don't know how to negotiate, they're pretty ignorant, and they're not even doing a good job picking properties because the tools they have are pretty terrible. And the assessors are high school diplomaed people, certified. They are not appraisers, they are not lawyers, and they're not negotiators. So you've got these certified assessors talking to the ignorant ratio people, property owner, about what value their homes should be. I see no evidence of negotiation. What I see over and over again is all the properties that the resident lists, the assessor says, "Yeah, your choices stink." I'm throwing, I threw them all away. "Okay, here's my three choices, here's the number I came up, here's your value." And they call the guy up on the phone, or the lady, and they say, "This is the number I got." And I don't see any negotiating going on where the numbers changed or different, that's the number. And the people have to go, "Yeah, okay, that's what you say," because they don't really know how to argue. So, now, once you pick the market value, then you multiply by the ratio. In the last three years, the ratio has been below 1. So what it means to an assessor is, they're gonna pick a market value like $300,000, and then they agree on it. And the ratio is 80%. So that means that the house is gonna be actually assessed for 300,000, it's gonna be assessed for 240,000. It's gonna be 20% lower of 300,000. So the assessment's gonna be 240,000. So they look at what the people paid last year, is what they're supposed to do, look at what the new assessment is, and refund them the money. That's an equalized assessment, that's done to maintain equity within the database of the assessing data. Okay, now, people don't know they're supposed to get that ratio. And one of the reasons they don't know is the form that we give out to file an abatement that I used doesn't have the ratio information on it. I kept saying to Commissioner Step up at the DRA, she said to me, "The form has the ratio information on it, you just..." I said, "We don't know about the ratio, we don't understand the ratio down here." "Well, the abatement form has the ratio on it, there's a section explains the ratio." So I kept going back to my form, going, "There's no section." Today she emailed me, and she said, "Here's the link, here's the RSA link in the form for abating, print it out." Well, sure enough, the state, the state form has a whole section that explains how you multiply out the ratio to calculate your new assessment, to weigh it off against sales data. But we delete that on our form that we give to the public. So that's why I didn't know about it. That's why, to me, it wasn't there. Now, I personally don't think it should be deleted, I think the public should see this write-up on our form. But I don't care if you delete it, I want you to apply it, 'cause it's still a confusing thing. I just want it to go with everyone. So, to prove Steve wrong, I said, "Okay, Steve is saying, 'Oh Laurie, half of those houses are in negotiation, so they didn't get the ratio, and the other half got it. For three years, that's what you're seeing in all that data.'" So I said, "All right, I'm gonna go to 2012. The ratio in 2012 was 1.09, it was above 1, right? So, I'm gonna pull out 50 abatements from these two people in the assessing office that are irritating me. I'm gonna take 50 abatements, I'm gonna look 25 on each one. And I'm gonna see how the ratio is applied when it's above 1, because that means that they're gonna give, if they multiply by it every time, they're always gonna give the property owner less money back." So, what did I find? 100% of the time, except one abatement, they applied the ratio. They multiplied on all those, on all those abatements, 1.09, 1.09, 1.09. So if what Steve is saying to me is true, that in some cases it's a negotiation, so the value is just 1, then I would expect to see half of those negotiations happening and the value be just 1. But I don't. It's multiplied every dang time. The one that wasn't correct, which I found very interesting, the assessor changed the ratio from 1.109 to 1.15. He multiplied by a different ratio. Why? Because he wanted the assessment price to be higher than what he had calculated. He wanted to make it even higher, by four grand, even though his math showed that it should be four grand lower. In his mind, he said, "Yeah, I feel like adding four grand on this guy. I'm gonna multiply by 1.15." And he upped it four grand. That ratio should never change, it is a constant calculated by the state. But if that was a negotiation, maybe the person called and said, "I don't want your number of 216,000, I want you to make me 220," which I can't even imagine, but then the negotiation should have been on the price, the sale price. But there's no indication that a negotiation took place. That assessor, for some reason in his mind, decided to throw a little more value on that property. So that is a question I had to the state, you know, why should anyone change that ratio? And I saw that with some of the ones in 2015, 16, and 17, that if the ratio was 88.5, they used 90.2, 'cause they just felt like changing it a little bit. I don't know why, to me. And it's not because it was last year's, and it was, it was, the new ratio hadn't come out, so they're using the old one up to that time. Nope, it's not that, it's just that the ratio's being tweaked. So, we need to figure out how to use this ratio and treat people fairly. I'm so staunchly opposed to letting people who aren't educated like I have become not receive what I'm gonna receive, because I'm gonna fight for my ratio, 'cause I know how. And all my neighbors on Berkeley Street are gonna get it, 'cause they're gonna know how. And the people in the assessing office that have filed abatements, they're gonna get it because they know how. But the rest of the public isn't gonna get it, because they don't know how. And that I don't like. I think everyone gets it, or no one gets it, okay? Tell the state, and tell Lindsey Step, screw that equalization ratio, dump it, and give it to no one, 'cause I'd rather see no one get it than me get it and nobody else, because I know how to argue. It's not right for residential properties. Everyone should be treated the same. And so what happened is, the state came out with our ratio, it was .95. So that means, if you're doing an abatement, you get 5% off your sale price. Steve informed the Board of Assessors that he thinks, KRT feels that's wrong, it's too low. KRT thinks it should be 97%. So legal is considering filing an appeal. They have a month to decide. And they can file an appeal to see if they get it down to 97%. Why are they doing that? Well, as I looked at the exposure report that I think you got a copy of, we have some big accounts, big commercial properties that are gonna abate, like Pheasant Lane Mall, and some big, big dollar properties, so maybe saving the 2% is a good bit of money. So for those big commercial properties, it makes sense, and I get that. But what he told the Board of, all the assessors in the meeting, is, "Don't give the ratio, keep the ratio 1, and basically, don't give the ratio that the state has set to any of the residential properties. Anything you do from this point forward, just use 1." Well, the meeting ended, and my pitch was, "Why are you doing that? The ratio is set." Now, I know you wanna potentially appeal it, but I'm gonna be smart enough to say, "I'm not gonna settle mine until I know what the number is, 'cause even if you, if he announces in the meeting, I think it's gonna be 97%. Why should this city pocket my 3% in your pocket? Why don't I get the 3%? Why don't I have the option of having the 3% applied before I sign off on my paperwork? I don't want you taking the 3% from me, I want my 3%. What does 3% mean, or 5%? 5% if it ends up being 95%, like the state said. On a $300,000 home, your assessment is now 285. You save $320 this year on your tax bill. Multiply that over five years with an eight rate increase, you're gonna save 1,700 bucks. If you ask the residential property owner, "Do you wanna save the 1,700 bucks and use the ratio, or do you wanna let us keep that?" How many are gonna say, "Just keep it"? I'm not gonna let you keep it, because quite frankly, I've overpaid you like 20 grand, and I feel pretty damn screwed. I want all my money back, and I want my ratio, and I'm gonna fight for my ratio. I don't wanna give it to you. So, we couldn't, we locked horns at the end of the meeting and didn't come to an agreement. I immediately left that meeting and went and emailed Lindsey Step up in Concord, the Commissioner. And then I went up there yesterday, and I had a talk with her assistant. And I asked today if they could set up a meeting so I could go back up and talk to Chuck Reese or some of the people up there. I'm in the, you know, in the throes of drafting up another letter on what my position is, just like I've kind of explained to you. You know, I wish, I wish people in City Hall understood what equity means, and that the appearance of fairness is really important to some of us. That's all, I wanna feel like we're all being treated fairly. And I want us all to have a fair shot at that ratio. And I want these assessors to know that you just apply it. Negotiate on market value, I don't care, but everything you do is on market value. When you're done with that, multiply by the number the state says to multiply by. And don't, for some reason, there's a power trip going on in there. There's a power trip with certain assessors who feel like they can put the screws to somebody by not giving it to them. I don't like that. It's random, it's targeting, it's, it has, it has all the elements in it of something not good. And part of that is happening because we put relatives in the same office.
Ms. Ordolano, if you have something new to add, we've given you a lot of latitude tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Remarks by members of the Board of Aldermen. Alderman Lopez.
I encourage everybody to check out the Awareness is Healing event this Saturday. I know a lot of people have sort of quietly declared victory over the opioid crisis, but the reality is, we are holding our own, but it's not over yet. There's a lot of people that are still struggling with addiction and recovery, there's a lot of people that are still mourning people that they've lost. They can use your support, and I think people in recovery can use your support too, so please join us on Saturday.
Alderman Karen.
Thank you. I'd just like to congratulate Gooddale's Bike Shop for celebrating their 100th anniversary. And I understand, Mayor, that you were able to attend and do a proclamation for them Saturday evening. They had about 350 people there, a lot of former employees and people, bike enthusiasts, so I understand them well. So that's wonderful for a business in Nashua to be here for 100 years.
Alderwoman Melissa Golia.
First of all, I think the recent events in New Zealand were concerning to all of us, and I know in our paper we saw the response from our Islamic community, and I just feel it's important that we let them know that they're welcomed here and we support them. So I felt we needed to acknowledge that. On another welcoming note, the National Regional, Nashville Regional Planning Commission has spent the past two days moving into their new Nashua location, and their phone number will be changing, but the current, the old phone number that we all have, we've been told will work for at least two years. So you'll still be able to reach them. And then, just two announcements. The Mary Goyet Spring Arts Luncheon is May 14th, and the tickets for those are available through City Arts Nashua. And then, the month of May also brings us the Sculpture Symposium. And this year, the three sculptors are from the United States, New Zealand, and Kenya. So if you go to City Arts' website, there'll be information about the opening ceremony, the closing ceremony, and if you would like to make a meal for the artists or contribute in some other way, you can sign up.
Alderman Melissa Goya, you said the City Arts was May 14th. Is that April 14?
Oh, I'm sorry, April 14th. Yes, thank you.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. I just wanna preface what I'm gonna say here by just saying that, you know, I'm a proponent of freedom of speech, I'm a proponent of people coming and speaking in front of us. However, I am not a proponent of bullying. And what we saw displayed by Ms. Ordolano tonight was bullying of those two public employees, who I'm sure serve their city well. And I don't like it. I don't think it's appropriate. And that's, this is my freedom of speech to say back to her that I think that it's inappropriate, and if she has a personnel problem, it should not be brought here before the Board of Aldermen. It should be discussed behind the scenes so that those employees aren't embarrassed on public TV.
Committee announcements. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. Tomorrow night, Wednesday, 3:27, 19, Infrastructure Committee, 7:00 PM, right here in the chamber.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, Joint Special School Building Committee, Thursday night at Nashville High School North. The architect and the construction manager will be giving us an update on the project.
Alderman Karen.
Personnel will be held, oh, April Fool's Day, Monday, April 1st, at 7:00 PM.
Just kidding?
Yes, shop meeting.
Other committee announcements? Okay, do you have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And we are adjourned at 9:42 PM. Thank you, everyone.